I called to order this work session of the Gladstone Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 18th. It's 5:34 PM. In accordance with Oregon law during the pandemic, we're meeting via Zoom rather than in person as we tried to do back in November, just as Omicron was starting to take off. So we're back doing these meetings hopefully in a safe and sane way, and I hope that we'll be able to involve the public that intends to be involved in this meeting tonight. Let's see, on our agenda this evening, our usual items, the consent agenda is the approval of our minutes from the November meeting, and is our regular agenda, we'll look at our monthly planning report. Our planner will not be in attendance tonight because this is basically just a work session. We had no land use planning matters to do. And then we will get into a discussion which I originally described as transportation system and safety discussion coming out of the city council's review of the decision that we made in November. And I broadened that a little bit, sent you a document that I hope you had a chance to look at, we can talk about, but really looking at some of the bigger issues of planning from a broad sense rather than down at the specific land use matter set. So we'll get to that in a few minutes. But tonight, we also have two members, one of whom has been reappointed by the city council and one of whom has been newly appointed by the council. So we will be meeting them or meeting her in a few minutes. And we'll begin with the roll call. So Tammy, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Langston. Commissioner Natalie Smith.
Present.
And I believe I can now just call you Commissioner Smith. Because we didn't miss, because Patrick's no longer, yes. Commissioner LaMonte. Commissioner Poole.
I'm here.
Commissioner Mercero. Commissioner, now, is it Volbida or Volbetta?
Volbetta, I'm present.
Volbetta, okay. Commissioner Volbetta.
Present.
And Chair Milch.
Present. We will say the pledge of allegiance to the flag, which you can see in Tammy's screen, which on my screen is the upper left-hand corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, Tammy Bannick, would you like to administer the oath of office to Commissioner Volbetta and or Volbetta? I've got to get, I've got to learn that right myself. And then hopefully, if Commissioner Langston is able to join us later, we can take care of that as well.
Okay, so if you'd raise your right hand. And I think I've sent you this, so you should be able to read along too. I'm going to start off. I state your name.
I, Jennifer Volbetta.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner for the City of Gladstone, Oregon.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner for the City of Gladstone, Oregon.
During my entire term, so help me God.
During my entire term, so help me God.
Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. We're glad to have you. Thank you, Jennifer, Jenny.
Commissioner Volbetta, would you like to just tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, and perhaps why you were interested in being a part of the planning commission?
Yeah, absolutely. So I grew up in Oregon City, right next door, back and forth from Gladstone and here, did a little bit of time in Milwaukee as well. So I spent my, basically my entire life in this wonderful community. I've been in the construction and development industry since 2013. I got my master's degree in real estate development a couple of years back at Portland State. We actually spent a lot of time reading that book that she sent out for us to take a look at, Citizens Guide. We spent a lot of time reading that. So that was fun to go back into that. I work as the pre-construction manager for a local contractor. And I'm super excited to be here. I've been really looking forward to, you know, getting connected with my community and finding ways that I can volunteer. So I'm excited to be here.
We're glad to have you. The planning commission is one of those odd commissions, you know, committees in the city, in the state of Oregon where there are certain rules about who can and can't serve on it. It places a limitation of no more than two people that are in the same industry. I guess they don't want, you know, all the dentists making all the decisions for the city or something like that. And then there's also a restriction as to having just two people who are in the construction or real estate industry. So you, both you and Commissioner Langston are two that are in that category. And even though the state law, you know, imposes that as a limitation, I always appreciate the knowledge and input that comes from people who have that background. As we're making decisions about buildings and new construction and housing, people knowledgeable about the real estate industry and the construction industry can bring insight that those of us who are just kind of laypeople in that area don't have. So it's good to have you here and good to have Commissioner Langston here. Commissioner Langston, Tammy is ready to administer the oath of office to you as you renew your term.
That's good. Sorry I'm late.
That's all right. So Tammy, will you go ahead?
Yes, if you'd raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Andrel Langston.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And the Charter and the Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner for the City of Gladstone, Oregon.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner for the City of Gladstone, Oregon.
During my entire term, so help me God.
During my entire term, so help me God.
Thank you and congratulations on your reappointment.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're still with us, Andrel.
Thank you, thank you.
Very happy.
Now, this being our first meeting of the year, one order of business is to elect the chair and vice chair for the 2022 term. I've been chair for the last two years and I sort of planned the work session portion of the meeting and would be happy to leave that regardless of who is elected chair tonight. My wife and I have recently taken on childcare responsibilities for our two youngest grandchildren. One is three and one is five. Both have some special needs and they are a handful. And doing them five days a week now because of a change of job for one of their parents means that as much as I have enjoyed chairing this group over the last two years, I think I would rather have someone else do that from this point forward. And so I will take myself out of the running for that and entertain motions or nominations for chair from members of the commission. So would anyone like to nominate someone to be chairperson of the planning commission for the 2022 year?
I'll nominate Les Poole.
Les Poole has been nominated.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Les Poole has been moved and seconded that Les Poole be the chair. Are there other nominations? All right, with only one candidate, all of who would.
Hold on for just a moment. I see Tom Mercero has his hand up. Mr. Mercero, did you have something to say?
Yes, I would like to nominate Commissioner Smith. Natalie Smith. For chair. And I would like to nominate Commissioner Langston for vice chair.
Well, we'll take that nomination for chair. Commissioner Smith. Would you be willing to serve as chair?
I'd give it a try.
All right. All right. Natalie Smith has been nominated.
So are there any other nominations? If not, then I will call each commissioner and then you can tell me your choice for chair.
Excuse me, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, I had my hand up.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
I would be, I would be happy to serve. It looks like I'm going to be moving in a few months. So I may stay in Gladstone. I'm certainly going to stay in the county, but it's a little up in the air. Obviously, I haven't moved. There's no final decision. But if I were elected chair, we might get down the road three or four months and then I would have to move on. So it might be best to decline the opportunity. Again, if there was no one else available, I would step right in. But we're going to get down the road and I'm not sure whether or not after eight years I'll still be here.
All right. Well, I appreciate, you know, you letting us know that. And we can take that into consideration as we vote. All right, Tammy, will you call the roll? And commissioners indicate either Smith or Poole as your choice for chairperson?
Commissioner Langston.
Smith.
Commissioner Smith.
I, can I vote for myself?
Yes, you can.
Okay, me.
Commissioner Poole.
I'll go with Smith.
Commissioner Mercero.
Smith.
Commissioner, I'm going to say this wrong again.
Accent on the first syllable.
Volbetta, right?
Volbetta.
Volbetta. I'm going to work on that. I'm going to work on it. Commissioner Volbetta.
Smith.
And Commissioner Milch.
Smith.
Congratulations, Natalie.
So Natalie.
Our new chair.
Natalie, you can run the election for vice chair.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to make a nomination for Langston. I would accept any other motions for vice chair as well. Would anyone like to?
I'll second the nomination for Langston.
Okay. Anybody, does anybody else have a nomination they'd like to share?
Okay, then we'll move on with a roll call. Commissioner Poole.
Langston.
Commissioner Mercero.
Commissioner Langston.
Commissioner Volbetta.
Langston.
Commissioner Milch.
Langston.
Commissioner Langston.
Langston.
And Chair Smith.
Langston.
Congratulations.
Wonderful. Since I know that Commissioner Milch, that you had prepared everything for this meeting, I would love for you to go ahead and continue with the rest of this. We don't have our planner with us on this meeting. But since you are fully prepared, I will let you move forward if you'd like to.
I'd be happy to.
Prior, prior to that, do we want to continue the minutes and the monthly planning reports to our next regular meeting? Or would you like to discuss those or continue with approving those at this meeting?
I, I think we can, everyone read the minutes, didn't they? If everyone's prepared to, to vote on that, I think we could go ahead and move forward with that. Did anyone find any changes or additions that need to be made to the meeting minutes?
I have none.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
Yeah, this Commissioner Poole. I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes as written.
Wonderful. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we need to do a roll call on this or just a hands up?
We'll, we'll do a roll call.
Okay, that sounds great. Tammy, would you please?
Commissioner Poole.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
I.
Commissioner Volbetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Milch.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
The minutes have printed, have a signature line at the bottom with my name on it. Usually after they're approved, the chair goes into the city hall and signs that. So perhaps Tammy could have it changed to the new chair? Or should it be the chair who was chair in the meeting at the time that they, that the meeting took place?
I believe it should be the chair who was president, that president at that meeting, that Tammy?
Yes, I would say it's the chair that was present at the meeting. I will get clarification with that and I will follow up with both of you to let you know who should be signing.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving forward. Commissioner Milch, did you want to go through the, I mean, I read through all of it, but would you like to go through the monthly report perhaps before we get to the discussion that you had prepared for?
I, I don't have anything really prepared related to it. It's, our planner provides a monthly written report that shows the contacts that take place in the county office from citizens in Gladstone and then the work that she does outside that. I'm describing that for the benefit of Commissioner Volbetta, who's not been with us before, just so we kind of get used to the routine. So a copy of that report is part of the agenda. It includes her involvement with our commission, in this case, the conditional use application that we had back in November. Also in December, she was involved in, there was no planning commission meeting, but she did attend the December city council meeting, which was an appeal of the decision that we had made in November. And then she includes a spreadsheet showing the various contacts for building permits, just customer contacts. We see Joy at our meetings on a regular basis, but we don't always appreciate the fact that much of what she does is directly with the community and people that are interested in putting a room addition or something else where she contacts them directly. So all of that is in the report that's here. She lists building permits that will at some point in the future require land use review, which may be, we may be seeing in the future, but usually they're, they're not ready for us to really do anything with. But for information purposes, those appear on that report.
Thank you, Commissioner Milch. That was excellent. Do you have any questions, Jenny?
Nope, not at this time.
I'm kind of wondering with what, with who you work with right now, have you had any, not exposure, but have you worked with Joy with any planning or permits through Clackamas County?
Nope.
Okay.
Not recently.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty then. Commissioner Milch, did you want to go ahead and start the discussion that you were going to want to present tonight?
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The last time this group met in November, we had a land use matter that we had to approve from a church on Glen Echo that wanted to put in a preschool and daycare. And it was a conditional use permit, one of those things where we attach a lot of conditions to that particular use because it's in a residential area and we want to be sure that it's compatible with being in a residential area. So our planner brought forth a list of recommend, recommended conditions. We reviewed them, we approved them, we heard from some members of the public regarding concerns about traffic flow in the area, and we added some additional conditions to that. At that meeting, the applicant representative from the church were not in attendance. At the time, I interpreted that in one of two ways. We had started our meeting with a different short meeting that went a little bit over and I thought, well, maybe they are trying to get in and couldn't get through and couldn't participate. That was one possibility. The other was that they have worked with the planner and are fully, you know, in agreement with the conditions that were listed on the application and therefore they have no objection to it. And whatever we decide is going to be, go over just fine with the applicant. Well, as it turned out, the applicant later appealed the decision that we had made because of two matters that were the conditions. One was concerning an easement for stormwater drains that run through their property. The city wanted to be sure that we were provided access to those in case there were ever in the future some need for that to be worked on. But the other, the major area that they were concerned about was the requirement that they install a sidewalk in front of the church. Most of that Glen Echo Avenue does not have sidewalks at all between Portland Avenue and Oatfield. When a new residential development went in there about three or four years ago, they have sidewalks that are on Glen Echo. And the condition was that the church would add a sidewalk that would join that one. And, you know, little by little, we would have more sidewalk presence on a street that sorely needs it. As the applicants explained when they came to the city council meeting in December, they, they found when they consulted an engineer that the cost of doing the sidewalk repair was going to be prohibited for the church. They have a way of, they have some volunteers who travel the country in RVs, helping local churches do construction. And they have arranged for those people to come and stay in Gladstone, I think at the RV location up by the Seventh Day Adventist Church, to help them with some of the construction needs on the interior of their building for setting up classrooms for the childcare and nursery school facility. But that wouldn't work for the sidewalk part. So they brought it to the city council and appealed our decision. And the city council had an excellent hearing on the matter. Mayor Stempel, who's our liaison to that, has chaired the city, the planning commission in the past. She's good at chairing those meetings and we get good help from our city attorneys on the script for online hearings related to land use matters. So it was an excellent hearing and the city council ultimately decided that the requirement of a sidewalk would not be, that condition would not be imposed at this time. The church was very willing to have a sidewalk there at some point, but it wanted it to be as a part of a long-term addition of sidewalks to that whole street and not just something that they would add because they didn't feel it would make that big a difference to the traffic pattern. And they didn't feel that they would have a large number of people coming to the preschool or daycare center via a sidewalk, even if one was installed. So I'm giving you all this background because when we have land use decisions, we've had training that tells us we want to be consistent and defensible in what we decide. And I think that based on the information we had in November, we were consistent and defensible in our decision making. And when it came to the city council in December, I believe they also made a consistent and defensible position, decision at the same time. Some of the city council members were, had done some research on the availability of childcare in the area and pointed out that in addition to the St. Stephen Church Nursery School, which closed last spring, there were at least two other childcare facilities in our community which have closed recently. And ultimately, the decision came down to this, is it more important to have, to meet a need by having more childcare and nursery facilities in the area than it is to have a sidewalk on a street which is mostly absent of sidewalks? I, for one, believe the city council made an excellent decision and ruling on this matter. And as I thought about our meeting tonight, I thought where do we, as a planning commission, step back and look at the big picture and make those decisions where how we weigh the need for the kind of service that one land use would provide? How do we weigh that against some of the other needs and issues in the community? We have a big thick master plan for transportations, for our transportation system that describes the importance of having sidewalks on Glen Echo and other streets in the area. And concern about speed limits and crosswalks in various parts of the city. But what we don't often do when we come together to look at land use matters is to step back and look at the big picture. And that's why I sent you that copy of the chapter from this book, The Citizen's Guide to Planning. It's published by the American Planning Association. It's a real good resource for, for people that are on the planning commission or just for citizens who want to be involved in the process. But that chapter talked about, you know, what is it we're trying to achieve in this planning process? Last year as chair, often when I heard from Tammy or, well, primarily Tammy Bannick, that Joy did not have a land use matter for us to deal with, I said, well, we won't meet, we won't involve the staff and bring everybody out for a meeting where we aren't deciding a land use matter. But I know that some of you felt we should have been meeting more often last year, which is why I decided tonight that even though, again, we don't have a land use matter to discuss, and we didn't have one in December, I thought it would be good to just take a look at the kinds of broad community needs that planning really serves. And to think about how we will try to meet those needs in the coming year. Now, we will be under a new chairperson, but this might be helpful to her just to have that kind of feedback and input and for everyone to share in a discussion in that regard. Let me pause there. I've talked way too long, as I usually do, which is why you'll be happy that I won't be chairing anymore. But let me know if you have just some feedback and how many of you maybe were aware of the decision that the city council made and what you thought of the appeal and the process and how all that was handled and decide.
Who would like to start and give their input? Okay, I will. I unfortunately was not able to attend that meeting because I was ill. And I remember in preparing, and I should have sent an email to Tammy, because that was a concern of mine, was like, okay, this is going to be a preschool. Does that qualify the same way as an elementary or a this is going to be a preschool. Does that qualify the same way as an elementary or a high school? Where you have slowed down speeds and crosswalks and things of that nature? I was going to ask about that during the meeting because I wanted to know if that would apply to this particular item that we were reviewing. So I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Milch, and I, I want you to, if you could, I think that's a very important aspect as we look at the big picture. I know at some point, we're going to probably do some strategic planning as to what we're going to try to focus on and work towards for this next year. And I think that's a key item, you know, we, we have to govern or make our decisions based on our codes and ordinances. But there's sometimes when we need to ask, you know, our liaison or perhaps say, you know, I think there needs to be a subcommittee of some citizens to get their input, et cetera. But I do think that that is a key thing that we need to discuss when we start doing our plan for the next year.
That was one of the questions that did come up during that meeting based on the citizen input of a neighbor who lives down the street from the church. And then also Commissioner Labonte, who's on the Traffic Safety Commission. You know, what constitutes a school for a school's own speed rate? Or speed limit? And it came up again at the city council meeting in December and they are looking into that. Some people, their recollection was that when the church that was previously on that site had a school that had about 300 students. It was much larger because the land that is now the, the housing development was
That was part of the church's property.
For, for them, for have, for a playground, for a large school. Some members recall that there was a 20 mile an hour speed limit. Now the limit is 25, but partly because that is one of those streets that kind of, you know, goes downhill as we have several in Gladstone. It's hard to get people to go 25. The, the applicants at their, at the meeting in December were very supportive of the police efforts to enforce the legal limit along there. In fact, they were grateful that the little radar card or however it operates that reports the speed of cars going down that hill is placed very near to their building because they think it has a positive effect on drivers to slow them down. And that pleases the residents along there as well as the people in church. So yeah, that was one of those important safety issues that came up at that time. And if you have been at the meeting and brought that up, you would not have been the only one that, that was concerned about that.
I, you know, I listen, I was in attendance for the December meeting, but I didn't hear definitively who was going to look into that and then get report back. Did anyone catch that? Regarding, you know, where, where is that, you know, where does that apply for the school zone? How do you get that?
The question was put to both the Public Works Commissioner or Director and the Police Chief. So I think between the two, the city staff will be working that out.
Okay. That sounds great. Does anyone have any questions or additional input, please?
See, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I felt the sidewalks might be a prohibitive issue based on the cost. And Gladstone, Flatstone, and that's, you know, we're not nice and flat like down the valley. So I was concerned about the cost because we're trying to create walkability, but we cannot, you know, by the same token impose something that's unreasonable or that asks more than they, they should be required to do. And I think where I got a little back and forth with it was we got talking about, you know, the, the traffic and the, the walking aspect and that boils down to what I've learned so many times over and over is what exactly is it to Michael's point? What is it we're doing here and what exactly are these people doing here? Because a preschool is, is not a school. Preschoolers generally get a ride to school. They aren't walking. So when you look at it that way, then you say, how many kids do they have or how many students do they have that are going to walk? It's really limited. I would hope that when, as they move forward, because I, I certainly understand the decision, but I would hope that the planning department or the council made some kind of reference to improving the shoulder there. We can certainly require them to keep, you know, to address, you know, vegetation sightlines, clean up and define the edge, put some gravel down or just do some things out front to make it safer, a little more walkable and not get into the expensive sidewalks. But I certainly understand the decision.
Yeah, the, the way parents drop off children at school at the, well, the kindergarten is a little, a little different because it doesn't have quite as good a the parking lot doesn't lend itself as well to kind of a rotational system of cars. But at the elementary school and the middle school, both, there's the same traffic pattern that this church is proposing, a sort of counterclockwise movement of cars. At the elementary school, they have staff members who bring children out to the curb and guide them to the car when their parents arrive. At the middle school, children generally are old enough to, to, to see their own parents' car and get in it and do it in a safe way. And but at the, at the kindergarten level and at, and to some extent at, at the elementary level and certainly at a preschool level, children are placed in the car by their parents and placed into child safety seats. So we don't have an issue, hopefully there would be good enough supervision that we don't have children running loose toward the street in this, in this area. But your concerns about how the cars move through and the traffic pattern, I think, was one of the things that the applicant had thought through carefully and had the same concern for and, and brought it up. I see, I see Councilor Mercero's hand is up. Councilor Mercer or Commissioner Mercero, do you have a, a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that I was under the opinion, and I'll go back to, I was watching the council session to discuss this whole issue for some time. I was under the impression they had agreed that a speed limit reduction would be appropriate for this. And I was pretty under the, much under the impression that they accepted that. The other thing that was mentioned regarding the sidewalks is that the, the church would set aside a place for a sidewalk. But the sidewalk was pretty much approved or at least recommended by the council. And the council indicated that the sidewalks all along Glen Echo would be in future discussion to make sure that happened consistently.
Yeah, I think that, that was the issue on the sidewalk since the, since the community's transportation master plan calls for sidewalks eventually to go in on Glen Echo to make it a safer route to school for high school students walking to and from up that hill. That ultimately is what the city would like to see there. But the decision that night and, and the, the church agrees with that and is willing to say, you know, we're, we're happy to have a sidewalk in front of our church. We just don't want to pay for it now because adding, you know, 60 feet, 75 feet, whatever it is of sidewalk on a street which doesn't have very much at all is probably not going to make that big a difference. Tammy Stempel, you turned on your video. I wonder if you want to weigh in on this because you obviously were there chairing the meeting and as I say, I, I support the, the decision you reached. And I think if we had had the applicant present at our meeting, we may have done exactly the same thing or at least exported in a similar way. Do you have some more input on this?
Well, I just wanted to let you, you know, that being a hardcore planning commission person that I am, it's really hard to make the decision to overturn a decision that you guys made. It's really hard to do. And the reason that I did it is because I know that we want to do sidewalks the full length. And I want there to be consistency. I want it to be a standardized design. And if we did it piecemeal, we probably wouldn't get that. But I wanted you to know that since that meeting, I've already put in an ask from the state senate for $1.5 million to install that in their emergency funds and the staff is currently pulling together some options for us and we're going to talk about it next month at the meeting. So yes, we're very serious about it and this is something that it's about time.
Well, and that's one of the things too, you know, we didn't have a lot of federal government infrastructure money being promised to us in the past, you know, in the past several years. So we have water system improvements that we need, transportation system improvements that we need. We knew that system development charges from new homes or new businesses wasn't going to be enough to pay for that. And now we're in a better position to look at those things in the way that council used it. I think the reason I brought this up was to say, perhaps we would have had our feelings heard if we felt that our decision had been reversed or, but I didn't feel that. I felt that with additional information, you made the decision that we probably would have made ourselves.
Well, you guys make the decisions based on the codes and ordinances and that's what I appreciate. You guys stick to the rules. Council, we kind of have a little bit of leeway there where we can bring in the warm and fuzzy components to these and look at those a little bit more than you guys do. So, um, you guys are doing a fantastic job. I appreciate all that you do. You do the hard decisions. That was a hard one. So I really appreciate.
You know, and sometimes on land use matters, if you look at what the function is of the, we only get what comes to us.
Yes.
So in recent years, we've had somebody who wanted to remodel a building to make it a, a dog sperm bank. We've had people wanting to do a, you know, remodel a gas station. And now we have people doing a preschool. Now, there may be a big market these days for in vitro fertilization of dogs because people are having dogs instead of children we hear during COVID. So, so maybe that's an important use. But what I really appreciated from the council was the recognition that childcare and care for children under school age was a very important need in this community. Gladstone was described as a childcare desert. And I know we have a three-year-old who's on a waiting list for a childcare program and he's like number 40 on the list for, you know, a, a program that has 50 children in it. And so I can identify with that need. And I think that's what the council has an opportunity to do. And maybe what we as a, as a planning commission should also be thinking about on those times where we're not looking at a specific land use. And that is, what are these citywide goals and needs that, you know, that we want to have addressed? We know that housing, affordable, attainable housing is one and housing options. And that's why we've engaged the firm to look at our codes and make some revisions. And we have some meetings coming up later this year to do that. But the
Michael.
The article, the chapter I shared had some, yes, go ahead, Matt.
What I was going to say was I wanted to see if any other Commissioner Mercero had input. Les or Andrel, do you have anything else to add to the input here?
Yep, I was gonna put my part in.
Thank you. I didn't mean to cut you off, Michael.
I'm sorry.
I was just saying, I didn't mean to cut you off, Michael. I just wanted to hear everybody else.
Yeah, I, I have no qualms with the decision. I wasn't aware that that was on the agenda for the city council meeting. And I, for all the, the reasons that were illustrated, it totally makes sense that they would drop that requirement. You know, I think about the one, like just looking at it, I, I think we made our decision based on, you know, the code and, and we're looking for opportunities to, to update our infrastructure, you know, throughout the city. And, and so it seemed like a, a great opportunity to at least get some sort of a stretch of a, of a sidewalk in that, at that location. I understand it's just, just one part. It seems like, I, I think if, if, if I would have put myself in the applicant's position, I would have to believe that they would have known that something like this would have been a requirement. And I probably would have addressed it, addressed it on the front end as opposed to after a decision was made. And, you know, I, I just think it could set a precedent, you know, for everybody because it's a requirement for anybody, you know, if they were going to be doing some type of work and, and that, and this is how a lot of progress is made, you know, it's, it's made, it's made with, you know, people putting in applications and paying fees and whatnot. And so it's not, it's not unusual that this, this, this request would have been there. And but again, I, you know, putting, you know, a stretch of sidewalk, you know, for 150 feet or whatever it is, and then coming back years down the road and doing more sidewalk, you know, it does, it, it can seem kind of weird. I'm happy to hear that Mayor Stempel reached out and, and is looking to get some funds that that makes, I think, everybody really, really happy. Especially, you know, people on that street and, and who have children. But yeah, that's just my perspective. I, you know, I, I don't, I don't feel bad for our decision. We, we stuck to what, you know, that the clear information that's out there for everybody. I think if, if they would have done a little bit more research, they would have known that that was going to be something that they would have to address. And I just hope in the future applicants address it on the front end prior, prior to the backend.
Great input. Thank you. Commissioner Mercero, did you, did you finish everything that you wanted to say?
I, I did that. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Poole, do you have anything to add?
No, we're fine. And if I could say something, you know, in today's world, we sometimes, we take things awfully personal. I'll just say it that way. That's not our job here. And had the whole decision been overturned, I might look at it differently, but when you've got a, an aspect that was obviously heavily discussed and a, and a key consideration, if that stumbling block, if we'll call a sidewalk, is a stumbling block, if that aspect got turned over or, or, you know, we're taking a different route, I, I just want folks to know it, it doesn't really reflect on us and on our decision making. And I appreciate the, the courtesies and, and the respect we're getting because nobody wants to feel like, well, I made a wrong decision or gee, you know, we had the right answer here. And so without being too long-winded, I would just say that from time to time, things like this will happen. And in no way do I look at this as some type of a, of a major overturning. You know, if we approved a, a library down there on that property and the council overturned us, then we'd have a problem.
Okay, Jenny, bear with me. Commissioner Vobeta?
Vobeta.
Do you have anything you'd like to add? And I apologize. I'll get it eventually.
Oh, no worries. I'll be around for a while. And I know I, I am new, so I'm, I'm catching up with a lot of these past meetings, but along with the sidewalk, there was a discussion about the easement as well.
Yes.
What was the result of that?
The, the result was they just had some informational questions. They didn't know what it involved, whether it meant that, you know, they would have to actually give up some land. But when it meant it was just access to it for potential repairs, they, they had no objection.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
It worked out rather well, yeah.
It's, it's, it's in an easy location to access, I think.
Yeah, I was looking at them on Google Maps. Just wanted to confirm my thoughts. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Michael, unless you have anything else, I was going to go ahead and ask from business from the commission. Being that this is a work session, I don't think we have anyone wanting, any citizens that are wanting to speak this evening. So let's start with you, Michael.
Well, one, one of the other things I did want to mention that is sort of related to this. Part of what's in that transportation master plan was a section on connections. How do they term it in this book? Neighborhood connections, I guess, is, is what it's described, how it's described in the, the text book that I recommended. book that I recommended. I wondered, one of the things that, that the applicant stated was that they, they had a specific, pretty specific understanding of what percentage of the people that would be using that school would be turning right when they left the parking lot and going up the hill to Oakfield and then getting on the two oh five freeway and going somewhere to work. And what percentage would be making a left onto Glen Echo and going out perhaps to McLaughlin and going in the other direction. And I thought at the time, aren't they anticipating that anybody in the neighborhood will be pushing a stroller to bring their children to school and, you know, walking home? One of the things in that, in our master plan was the need to connect neighborhoods that that aren't easily accessible to one another. Commissioner Smith lives in the, the, the flat grid part of Gladstone. If she wants to walk from her home to one of the parks down on the riverfront, there are literally thirty different paths she could take, depending on whether she wants to make a right turn into corner or a left turn. It's a very walkable area. But there are cul-de-sac neighborhoods in some of the upper part of Gladstone where if you want to get you know, to someplace that's two hundred feet away as the crow flies, you have to get in your car and drive to the end of a street, then take another connector street and then come in from the other side. And one of the things that our transportation master plan recommended was eventually having some connections between streets. Commissioner Langston and I used to be neighbors, and I always wished that between his house and his next door neighbor's house, they could move the fences a little bit and create a little path that would make it easier for me to walk directly from my home out to Abernathy Street. Because it would cut down about half a mile my commute to the library if I'm walking or taking the bicycle, which I used to do. And so that, that's one of the things, you know, that, that's in that, in that list of what are we trying to achieve? Neighborhood connections, safe transportation, sidewalks, walkability, all of that. Some of that will come up as we look at the housing code in the future, and so I, I just want to keep it all in mind as we move forward.
Thank you very much. Okay, what about Commissioner Mercer? Do you have any business you'd like to share with the commission?
I would just like to, to to congratulate our new Commissioner Vova? Did I say it right?
Vobeta.
Vobeta.
Okay, Commissioner Jenny.
There we go. Okay, is that all you have, Commissioner Mercer?
I was happy with me tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Poole, do you have any business for the planning commission?
Yes, I, I think you've done a great job. Way to step up. I, I really mean that. You stepped right in there and I appreciate it. And as you know, I've got a lot of meeting experience. Unfortunately, I couldn't run to be your vice chair. But, you know, call me anytime. I, I don't claim to know everything, but we're all here to support you and you're where you're at. The other thing I would mention is with regard to transportation, we don't have enough time tonight to talk about the T-word, and that's tolling. So everyone watch that closely. It's, there's a couple different things that are going on there. And one of them is the state's getting, for lack of description, they're, they're, they're getting a little squirrely with us. And I won't say any more than that, but it's a very important issue, and it will affect Gladstone and, and our future. So let's all make sure we're up to speed on what's going on with tolling and, and obviously anything transportation-related. And welcome aboard, and for now, I'm gonna call you Commissioner Jenny. See, I took, yeah, I didn't blow it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrel, any business?
Uh, no, not any new business. I just wanna second everybody. Congratulations, Natalie, for being the chair, and any way I can help, please let me know.
Oh, I'll let you know. You're my vice. We gotta work together. Okay, sounds great. Anything else?
Nope.
And Commissioner Jenny, do you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
I just thank you all for making me feel very welcome. I'm really excited. It seems like I'm in really good company. I'm looking forward to getting to know you guys and, and finding out ways that I can support the, the city and everybody.
Excellent. We're so thankful that you decided to join us. Thank you. Commissioner Milch, do you have any last words you'd like to share?
Yeah, I was thinking about one other thing, and now I, now I can't remember because I thought you had already told me. I wasn't gonna say anything else.
I thought what you shared the last time was in conjunction with.
I do, I do want to say something else that's going on regionally. If, if you follow some of the online social media, which, by the way, a couple things. We've got tomorrow night is our meeting where we learn about some of the ethical rules for being a planning commissioner. Some of us have attended that before, but our, our city attorney does a real good job, and that's an important meeting to attend. And perhaps at some point in the future, we will also have another training regarding land use hearings and the procedures for that. One of the things that was in this book, which seemed a little bit dated, but there was a reference to climate change and reference to people having seen Al Gore's An Inconvenient Truth, which seems dated, although this book was only written in two thousand nine, but I'm not sure when that movie and book came out. But some cities across Oregon are taking seriously the responsibilities that they have at the local level to change the types of energy that people are using in their homes. And tonight, I think the city of Milwaukee actually has an ordinance where they will be instituting in the near future, if it's passed, a ban on homes having natural gas-powered things, new construction. And then the goal is by like two thousand thirty-five to eliminate natural gas from homes, even existing buildings and homes. Eugene, I think, is looking at something similar, and there are cities in California that have done that as well. It, it stirred up a lot of disagreement on social media, of course. But the way we, the, the forms of energy that we use, some of, some of them are renewable and perhaps will not contribute as much to climate change, and some of them, you know, contribute more. But keep in mind that, that that discussion is going on. We all experience the very cold weather, and people are saying, you know, and my family, the only heat we had was the water heater that was a gas water heater, and we could take hot showers, and that kept us warm because our furnace didn't work. And people say, well, if you take away our gas, we won't be able to keep warm in a, in a freezing situation. But if we continue to use some of these fossil fuels as our source of energy, there will be more ice storms and more cold winters and more heat waves in summer. So it's, it's an important issue, and we should follow how local and regional groups are addressing it.
Thank you very much, Michael. Thank you. Well, I'll go ahead and end it out here. Michael, I want to thank you very much for your last two years of service as our chair. You did a fine job. I know that I will be calling upon you now and then again to get some advice or help me work through a project. So I want to thank you very much. I'm glad that we have Langston and Jenny. I'm glad that you've joined us. And on that note, I don't think now wait for another meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Chair Smith, can I just intervene for just one moment? I wanted to let you know, I believe we will be having a meeting in February. I believe we'll be doing, the work plan will be one agenda item as well as Joy has indicated she has received a land use application, but hasn't deemed it as complete yet, so we're hoping that that will be moving forward at that time too. So everyone should plan on meeting in February at six thirty at our normal time.
Excellent. Is there any other information, Tammy?
That's all I have at this point. Thank you.
With our agenda that in March, we have a meeting with the committee working on the housing audit. And then in April, the city council's second meeting of the month will be a joint work session between the council and the planning commission on that issue too.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, I want to thank you very much for your input regarding the sidewalks, and is there anything you'd like to share before we end the meeting?
Sorry, I just had to push my puppy off my lap. No, a hundred pound lapdog. No, you guys, congratulations, Chair Smith. And thank you for wanting to be a part of Planning Commission, Jenny Vobeta. I got that right. And congratulations, Andrel, for vice chair. Thank you, Michael, for all the work that you've done. It's been an incredible ride for you guys, and no, that's it. Awesome job. Awesome. Number one fan.
So I'd like to, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're adjouring the meeting at, I don't know, I don't have a clock right in front of me. Meeting is adjourned. Six thirty-four.